Call the special meeting to order. Roll the little bit.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
And Mayor Lamson.
Here. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your last statement. I gotta go get it just a second.
Okay.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and website and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Tonight's meeting will air Sunday, July 21st at 6:00 PM and Monday, July 22nd at 6:00 PM. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. My public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. Do not have any speaker sheets.
Thank you. So if there's anybody that would like to make public comment, they can fill out a sheet at any time. We'll take it. All right, presentations. We have the city manager recruitment by Pacquiao McKenney.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. My name is Phil McKenney. I'm with the search firm Pacquiao McKenney. I want to thank you for the time that you spent with me today, meeting with you individually. As you know, this is just the kickoff portion of the recruitment phase. Meeting with you is the first step along those lines. We have a community meeting that is tentatively been scheduled for the 30th. Encourage everyone in the community to come out to that. I'm looking for input as far as what we're looking for in the next city manager. The actual recruitment process, once the kickoff portion has concluded, which will probably be another two to three weeks, then we'll start the candidate profile, create that for your approval, and then start the actual recruitment of the position. Thinking a closing deadline towards the end of September, depending on when we get the candidate profile complete and out on the street. Takes about three weeks after that closing deadline for me to screen the candidates and bring back to you a group of recommended candidates, and then we encourage interviews to occur about two weeks after that. So you're most likely into early November as far as the final interview process, and hopefully someone can start before the new year. It would be my guess. I didn't really have a chance to kind of sit down and synthesize all my notes from today, but obviously the budget is of major concern, and you're very well aware of that. But then also generally speaking, I think we're looking for a people person, someone that is willing to truly engage with the community, with you, and set the direction for Galt, and then work hard to implement that direction. I don't really want to go much more than that at this point in time, just also to say that I'm very excited to be representing the city and look forward to a great process. Tom has been excellent. Joanne has been excellent to work with, and I thank them in advance, and thank you in advance for a good process. Thank you.
Thank you. So that meeting will be Tuesday, July 30th, and where and when?
It'll be in the city council chambers. We're looking at a general community meeting at 6:00 in the evening, and there may be some more specific meetings with groups during the afternoon. Time to be decided.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Questions? Okay. Great meeting we do today. All right. Departmental, subject Financial Sustainability Plan and the General Fund Review. Mr. Haglund.
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, good evening. We meet here again for the second time in as many nights, and tonight we will focus on a single issue, which is the financial sustainability or developing financial sustainability for the city. As the council is aware, the general fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, and two of our lighting landscape district funds are running very significant deficits. Deficits that truly threaten the financial capability of the city over the next few years to provide services to this community. And so tonight, well, we will be holding a series of meetings, and tonight, as I indicated, we'll be focusing on the general fund itself and what is giving rise to the deficits in the general fund. We will talk about what departments have identified as potential measures to reduce expenses in the general fund and the service implication of those cuts. So our financial sustainability project is just that, a project. It's a project that is not only timely but time sensitive. We need to take action quickly. We need to take bold action because the city is presently spending beyond its means, and we have had a structural deficit for a number of years. But in FY '19, which we just finished on June 30th, and FY '20, which we began on July 1st, we will run between those two years a $4.1 million deficit. It's time for the council, for staff, and for the community to chart a different course because that $4.1 million over two years, $2 million a year, however you want to look at it, is not an acceptable standard for a community the size of Galt with our limited capacity relative to revenues. And so how will financial sustainability occur? First, we're going to focus on short-term measures, and those are going to be measures that we can take this year in the next month to reduce our expenditures dramatically in order to bring balance to our FY '20 budget. And then that will set us up for FY '21 and '22, which likely the next city manager will begin with staff shortly after the first of the year. But we'll also focus on some midterm options. And midterm, short-term options, again, those things we can, actions we can take in the next month. Midterm options are actions that may take longer than that for us to pursue. They can be anywhere from the next six to nine months to two to three years, and we will be continuing to, and the city should continue over that time, to evaluate service levels and employee costs so that we can continue to ensure that our organization is efficient and sized in a way to best deliver the services that we can afford to deliver. And probably the most important part of that sentence was that we can afford to deliver. And finally, we'll focus on some long-term enhancements, revenue enhancements, that this council should consider. One of the things that we will talk about for the rest of tonight, on July 31st, when we discuss in earnest the Parks and Recreation budget and the lighting landscape districts, one of the things we will talk about both those evenings are the short-term expense reductions. But the city needs to develop longer-term revenue options as well because if you don't, you'll be back in another meeting like this in a year or in two years continuing to cut. And we have to be able to figure out appropriate means and measures to work with our community at enhancing revenue options so that we can continue to deliver services. So the purpose of this meeting is, I went too far. The purpose of this meeting, again, is the general fund. And one of the things we will discuss tonight are things that I tasked the departments to do to identify 10% and 20% potential cost elimination and the requisite service reductions, what that means practically, so that's tonight. On the 31st of June, as I indicated, we'll talk about Parks and Rec and the lighting landscape districts. On August 13th, we'll conduct a review of combined reduction measures that I recommend to this body and that you will take, you can discuss that night and take under advisement. And then we will follow with a meeting, a regular meeting of the city council where you will consider those expenditure reductions themselves. And as I indicated, times of the essence because every day or month that we delay in this fiscal year, it reduces our ability to save some of the funding that will ultimately be before you for decision. And so I'd like to suggest some ground rules for tonight's presentation. First, I think we should recognize this is really an education session. It's a way to dive deeper into the general fund itself, its revenues, its expenditures, its expenditures by department, that we want to recognize that none of the potential cost reductions and service reductions that are, have been identified by the departments come easily. These aren't things that the departments want to propose to you, but they're things that are necessary to propose to you as we look at that short term and we look at how to rectify our dramatic overspending of, in the general fund and the Parks and Rec fund. But this is also not a meeting to stake out positions. I'd like to suggest that to you, that again, this is educational. Please take in the information, recognize it for what it is. The professionals sitting here tonight that have all manner of training across all manner of disciplines have put this together for you because they believe that it's, that what they're recommending is in the best interest of the budget and our ability to preserve and protect the services we deliver to our community. But ask questions. Clearly ask questions. The better educated you are, the better you understand the budget and the numbers. I think two things happen. One, the budget becomes much more simplified for you in the context of everything we have going on. So I encourage questions. But I think the second thing is that you begin to see and understand why it is certain of the cost elimination and service reductions are being proposed. So the general fund is made up of revenues that come to us from sales tax and property tax and fees and other miscellaneous income that are not otherwise restricted for a specific purpose, and that is that general fund monies can be spent on any lawful purpose that is to the benefit of the community. And typically, these funds are spent first and foremost on core services, those services that are most important to deliver to our community. So what are core services versus non-core services? Core services are typically defined as those that are mandated by law. There's some law that gives rise to the service we need to deliver or that it deals with the health and safety of the community. So think of police, public works. There are certain laws that we must follow with respect to how we account for all of the city's funding, not just the general fund, that fall within the purview of finance. We have different laws that apply to how we develop our community, right down to the mandate to have a general plan and to use that general plan as the development constitution of our community. There are provisions in law that provide for a general law city to have a city clerk and to follow certain administrative functions. Non-core services are typically defined as those things that are desired, that may help achieve or define the character of a community, but don't fall into the first category of being mandated. So think of libraries and parks and recreation programming and even a planning commission or other elective boards and commissions. They aren't required by law. You may have them for particular reasons, but they aren't otherwise required by law or mandated for a city to provide. Yet, the last bullet, cities can define for themselves truly what is core and non-core. And so it is an expansive ability or there is flexibility for a city council to define for itself what it believes are its core services. So what are we about to review? We're going to have a quick review of our revenue sources. We're going to talk about expenditures by department, and we're going to take a look at what the, as I indicated, what the departments have identified for potential elimination. So again, the general fund collects revenue in support of core services in operation. Reserve funds of our general fund, and this is where our problem comes in truly, reserve funds are those that, those general fund revenues that are, that exist over and above what is allocated for operational expenditure. We typically refer to those as reserves or available fund balance, pay the costs of those funds that are underwater, and that's our current situation. The Parks and Recreation Fund is underwater last year to the tune of about 1.4 million, this year to the tune of something over 1.2 million. Then we have our, as I indicated, our lighting landscape districts that contribute more than $100,000 of combined deficit, and the general fund picks all that up. And it's when we begin to pay all that year over year over year that we run our available fund balance or reserves down. And our long-range plan, which you'll see in a moment, forecasts that we will be out, we will be out of available fund balance and our emergency reserves by 2024. And those are the numbers. You've seen this chart before. We began fiscal year '19, if we take a look at 6:30, 2018, the end of FY '18, we had $10.5 million in available fund balance. So we had to clear some things up along the way, one of which was the previous year's Parks and Recreation contribution of $1 million. And then we carve off $4.4 million for our rainy day fund, our emergency reserve, whatever you, economic stability reserve, whatever you want to call it. We carved that off, and we're left then with an adjusted fund balance or available fund balance of $4.8 million. And last year, we budgeted to spend 2.4 million of that available fund balance on all of these things right here within the brackets to include the 1.4 million in Parks and Rec, really 1.5 million in Parks and Rec funding. And that available fund balance then dropped to 2.4 million dollars. Well, without action in the next 30 or 40 days, the council, we are set up under the budget that was adopted in March of, or excuse me, in FY '13, May or June of FY '18, excuse me, the second year, we're going to drop from that starting position of $2.4 million to $777,000. Now, we'll still have the emergency reserve for the time being, but look at that. Look at going from $10.5 million down to $777,000 with a $4 million reserve kind of carved off to the side. But is that really where this council wants to be? And I know the answer to that's no. So here's a graphic portrayal of our long-range financial plan that incorporates the general fund, Parks and Rec, lighting landscaping, and then combines it into what the outlook is for all of those funds when we compress them together. So look at the top blue line. That's our general fund. Left to its own devices, the general fund is actually doing okay. You can see a growth line. It has an upward trend, but it's not left to its own devices. The gold line, solid gold line, is lighting landscaping, and we can see in about '19, we begin to go underwater just a smidge, but we see how that grows, and the trend by 2024 is for that to continue to grow. There continues to be a deficit. But more stark than that is the green line below it, which is the Parks and Rec fund, which takes a dramatic dive down to, you know, more than $6 million in deficit by 2024. And so when we combine the blue, the gold, the green, we see what happens to our general fund. It begins to trail off really back in '16, '17, gets more dramatic in '18, '19, '20, and right there in 2024, you have spent through your available general fund reserve balance and your emergency fund of $4.4 million, and you have nothing in the bank to handle an emergency. So our general fund revenues, to step right into where we receive our money, it's mostly taxes. We see property taxes there, then we see sales and use taxes, $2.6 million. Remember that number. Remember that number. Two point, Kurt?
I'm sorry. At the end of '24, you made the statement that we would have no reserves available.
That's right.
And I understand that. But in actuality, in '24, we would be looking at, we would have to make cuts at that point. Otherwise, we would be spending money we wouldn't have, correct?
Yeah, you're going to have a couple of things go wrong. By 2024, no longer do you have your, any available fund balance. That's been gone for a while, and you've been chewing up your $4.4 million rainy day fund.
Right.
But then you're likely to have a cash flow problem. And then it's about, can you meet payroll?
Right.
And can you make payments that you need to make? Can you pay, can you pay the smud bill? Things like that. And so now it's juggling all of that. And really, from a general fund perspective, you, you know, the city, it would be conceivable anyway that the city's then trying to consider whether or not it needs to enter into bankruptcy to clear out any potential debts that are giving rise to this, and you don't have many. The city does not have a lot of debt.
So I guess, I guess my point was, is that either we address these issues today and make these cuts, or it will be forced upon the city in 2024. There will be no choice.
Right, right. And when we get to the 20% cuts, that, you know, it's, we'll talk a little bit more about that, what that means, and, you know, the difference between the 10% cuts that we're doing right now, or that we're, that we've identified right now, I should say. It's up to you as a council as to what we do and the 20% cuts. And we'll talk a little bit about that difference, but I think that you'll hear me say later that the 20% cuts are a window to the future, and that future is going to be somewhere between 2022 and 2024. Those 20% cuts are like driving forward and looking out the windshield, and at some point, you're going to have to try to slam on the brakes to avoid the massive wreck in front of you. And it won't be clear whether or not you'll be able to do it that quickly.
Anything else from council? Okay.
So here are your revenues, again, made up largely of taxes. You can, you can see the list, and this is the summation. That $11,31,000 is the summation that ties right on through to the budget that you have adopted and that the city operates from, and it's made up of these various categories. There is no other general fund revenue. It's all those right there, finite list. And so here we look at a broad expenditure summary, and this is all the departments. You see police, public works, community development, right on down the line. And our expenditures in the general fund are total just short of $14 million. So the city has entered into a history of budget cuts, and this is, this shows a bit of that history as it regards recurring operations and maintenance. So you hear me refer to O and M, operations and maintenance, pens, pencils, professional services, things like that that may enter. And this strips out a number of things. These are actually recurring O and M expenditures. And what we've done is we've stripped out some of the one-time stuff that comes upon us. It's a dollar figure that has to be paid in that year. It may be some sort of a permit that we have to obtain or something like that, or it could potentially be a professional service or something that doesn't follow year to year. It's, and so we kind of wanted to pull out the one-off stuff because we're really trying to watch that so that you can get an idea from at least this slide as to those things that we buy every single year in order to facilitate services to our community. You can see how that number has been decreasing since 2015, decreases every year since 2015. And you'll also hear me say probably later, but I'll say it now, at $1.5 million in O and M on things that you need to, I mean, that's smud, it's a PG&E bill, at least part of that, and things like, you can't just get rid of all that. And so there's very little room to cut in operations and maintenance. And so here's the departmental breakdown. It shows the personnel cost of each of our general fund departments, and it shows the O and M cost. And on the O and M cost, you're going to notice it's higher, but now we've added back in those one-time things that appear in FY '20. And so this is about fiscal year '20, the current year that we're in. And again, it ties to our total expenditure budget with the exception of some minor capital. So what did I ask the departments to do? What was my request of them as we seek to take care of this? And I wanted them first and foremost to examine their budget for any possibility of cost elimination. And I tasked them to take a look at everything in their budget. Now, if we were to take a look at where we stand in this fiscal year from a deficit standpoint, it's about $1.4 million. So that equates to approximately 10% of the general fund if we were to take all the savings only from the general fund. If in the alternative, we were to take all of the cost reductions from Parks and Recreation, we'd have to have, as you see there, about a 34% reduction in Parks and Recreation costs, and we'd have to have an additional 12% reduction in lighting landscape costs. And so I asked the departments to identify that 10% and 20% expenditure levels and to inform me of what it meant for their department and for services. And as I indicated before, prompted by Kurt's question, without action this month, that 20% cut will operate as a window to the future for you. You'll be able to see what's coming at you by not acting now. And I wanted the departments to preserve to the extent possible the core services that we provide, those services in each department that are most important. So if we start with the police department, we take a look, their core mission is safety. It's likely self-evident to all of us, but we want to enhance quality of life in our community by making it safe. And this community holds that as a high priority, and one of the reasons why we know that is that in 2008, they passed Measure R. Now, Measure R isn't really the prime subject of our conversation tonight. The general fund is, but I mention it because Measure R was a commitment on the part of the community to public safety. So key considerations were maintaining standards to achieve community safety, those safety standards, recognizing that Measure R exists and that it provides funding beyond a floor value or a floor dollar figure of $5.4 million, which was the general fund expenditures for police services in the year that Measure R was enacted by the people. And so we don't want, we, we're in a position where we aren't going to reduce, in potential reductions in the police department, we aren't proposing anything that would go below that floor value of $5.4 million. below that floor value of five point four million dollars. Measure R covers about ten and a half positions, from police officers to gang to school resource officer, professional standards officer, and some others. And that the difference, though, between two thousand and eight, when Measure R was enacted, and today, this FY twenty budget is one million thirty-nine thousand dollars. So another way of looking at it is that within the general fund portion of the police budget, there is about a million thirty-nine thousand dollars, subject to potential reduction. So if we look at a breakdown of the department into its essential divisions, we have police admin, field operations, clearly the most expensive. That's the police officers on the street every day and every night, the detectives division, dispatch and records. And again, six point four million dollars total between all of those divisions. So ten percent cuts in the police department would equal about six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And looking at where the budget stands today, in order to try to achieve or approach that ten percent reduction, would mean freezing three vacant police officer positions in the general fund, reorganizing the community service officer position to take on duties of a current vacancy in our parking control officer, and using parking control office, funding that is separate from the general fund for the parking control officer, to pay for the community services officer to take on those parking control officer duties. That reflects about a sixty-three, almost sixty-four thousand dollar reduction in general fund expense. And then freeze a vacant police dispatcher position. In total, we fall short of ten percent, and at five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. But where, these are the immediate areas that we can identify for a potential reduction without laying off employees. And so again, I tasked each department with identifying the impacts of ten percent cuts. And it would remove two patrol officer positions from the street and one from detectives. It would result potentially in some overtime expense for patrol and certainly lowering the priority of investigative follow-ups on certain of our case processing, the lower priority issues. Not that they wouldn't necessarily get done, they just may not get done as timely now. The CSO officer position being reorganized, it would eliminate or take them out of some of the community outreach functions in favor of taking on those parking control functions. The CSO would be unavailable for things such as neighborhood watch meetings, community outreach events, and the like. And then the loss of the records dispatch position would result in a position, a sergeant position, being delegated as needed to take on some of those duties. The department would still operate with four patrol supervisors and they would be working a twelve-hour shift. Moving to public works. In public works, we have a lot of different funds going on. So what you're about to see is only the general fund portions of the public works department. And so the general fund portions of the public works department fund ongoing maintenance of facilities, taking care of our city vehicles and equipment, and doing development review and planning support. And so key considerations are that these are your engineers looking at architectural drawings and things like that. It's a high level, a high skill set. It's a specific discipline that's taking these things on. And as we begin to march through some of the elimination, there may be less ability to do that. But nonetheless, the key considerations are that it is a highly skilled and professional staff with degrees and in some cases, advanced degrees that are taking on these roles for the city, just because of the nature of their work. We're talking about deferring preventive maintenance to facilities and vehicles and equipment, maybe even eliminating or deferring major projects for those same facilities and equipment. And there's a point here of consideration is that frequently deferred maintenance problems advance into more significant problems as time marches on. They become more costly. Here is the general fund portion of the public works budget. You see it at about two million dollars, just over two million. So ten percent cuts would equal two hundred and six thousand dollars approximately. And so the department has identified freezing a current or a vacant facilities maintenance position, but backfilling that for our maintenance supervisor to have somebody, some assistance, backfilling that with some part-time. So that would save us about fifty thousand dollars. The public works director has taken a look at the allocation of public works staff and believes that we can achieve some savings in the general fund by allocating those staff members more appropriately to funds that they serve at a higher percentage than they serve the general fund. And that would account for about a hundred and three thousand dollars. And then eliminate some facilities maintenance projects that you see listed there, roofs, carpet, cabinet, parking lots, things like that, to the tune of about fifty-four thousand dollars. And so in FY twenty, in FY twenty, that would save two hundred and seven thousand dollars. The impacts are gonna be delays in providing services, think facilities maintenance and that. Some lower priority projects in facilities maintenance wouldn't likely get done, or they may just be on a long delay list. Further deterioration of infrastructure will naturally occur. There may or may not be anything we can do about that, given the fact that we have to make some measure of decision about our expenditures. But it is nonetheless an impact. And over the long term, maintenance costs can increase. We take a look at community development and the services it provides. We think of our planning division. They take in every application that comes through the door, whether it's for a residential, multifamily project, a commercial project, industrial project. Its first stop on the trail is the planning division typically. And so then they are working through a myriad of state laws and regulations, the city's general plan, the city zoning code, and the like, as they move that project along in the approval project. The planning, or excuse me, the building division, compliance with the laws. For those things that are under construction, we are the safest country on the face of the earth and we are for a reason. And that's because we have codes and we have inspections of that construction as it proceeds. And that's what our building division does. And incidentally, we already contract out some of our building division work. Code enforcement handles citizen complaints of things that are happening in their neighborhood or, and that either need to be cleaned up or remediated in some way. The planning commission itself serves as an intermediary quasi-judicial body that undertakes a recommendation to this council on certain items or approval outright by that planning commission of those items, if allowed under our code. Key considerations are the ability to respond to development in a timely fashion. And so we always wanna be trying to figure out a way to preserve and protect that. And I would have you remember that particular bullet when we get to the next slide because timeliness is a, is a key issue with development. We are poised to build more than twenty-five hundred homes that are already approved and seven hundred and thirty-seven additional or somewhere in the review process. But what is frustrating is that we can't accurately predict the timing or the pace of when those will come online. And I think that a shared frustration of the council and of staff is that we have this number, large number, approved, but no one's pulling the trigger on building in any substantial numbers. If they were, perhaps our general fund would look different than it does today. But we don't have that development-related income coming in right now. The state is imposing housing growth expectations. That will continue as we march toward fifty million in this state in the next twenty or twenty-five years. And other key considerations is that additional housing in our community will indeed lead to additional commercial. That is a maxim that usually works out. But again, we can't predict the pace or timing. We have to take action now. There's the department's budget. And for a community development department, even for a city of twenty-six thousand, between planning, building and code enforcement, that's a fairly skinny budget. About nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, about a million dollars for those broad three services. So there, a ten percent cut would equal ninety-five thousand five hundred, right? And so we take a look at freezing the building official position itself. Right now, it's covered by a contractor, but, and we were budgeting to fill that position, but we would hold it in the freeze, save about sixty-one thousand dollars. There was additional effort on the part of the department to further reduce its M and O by eliminating travel and a few ancillary supplies. Again, there wasn't much there, but it totals forty-seven fifty. One of the things the council can consider is whether or not, and how many commissions you have. And there is no legal requirement under the law to have a planning commission. Oftentimes, you do to gain input and a fresh set of eyes. But there isn't a legal requirement to have one. And many cities back in the Great Recession eliminated that, and for two, eliminated their commissions for two reasons. One was cost savings, but the second was they felt that surety of the planning process and getting approvals, because all of that can rest with the city council, can happen more quickly. Estimated savings in all of that is about seventy-two thousand, just shy of seventy-two thousand dollars. But those are just ideas. Pardon?
What's the indirect on the planning?
Oh, the indirect, I'm sorry. Thank you for asking that. The indirect savings for planning commissions is about thirty-seven thousand dollars. And so as the department went through and looked at what it spends in supporting the planning commission, the indirect costs of costs that we already incur, attorney time, you know, community development director time, overtime or time spent at planning commission meetings and things like that, contributed in a, and they were fairly conservative in coming up with that number, to an indirect savings of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. And so what would we do with that? What could you do with that? Well, you could redeploy that in other ways to perhaps bolster services that you might cut elsewhere in community Thank you. I went right over that. So impacts of ten percent cuts, it does compromise the ability to meet policy compliance and laws, whether it's for the city's general plan, for SEQA activities, for zoning review and recommendations, annexations, and our ability to respond to requests from outside agencies and the community. Moving to the finance department, we talked a little bit about the finance department in one of the early slides. And this is a department that has certain mandates. It come, you know, we have to do certain things because we collect money and because of laws that are passed in the, and guide us in how we account for the public's money, whether that money comes from the federal government, the state government, or organically through mechanisms that we have put in place in our own community. But clearly, some of the fundamental principles of finance are following generally accepted accounting principles. So you have a highly trained staff, a few staff members, clearly that are highly trained, whether it's accounting degrees or CPA or whatever, that bring you the ability to be able to not only do that, but understand how to do that. Generally accepted accounting principles, a fundamental disciplinary must in a finance department. But also following the proclamations of the Government Accounting Standards Boards. And so you've heard GASB forty-three and GASB forty-four and GASB this and GASB that. And they continue to promulgate these things, which continue to drive the type of work that we're mandated then to undertake in order to achieve a clear, clean audit that auditors can come in, look at, know that we're spending money in the best interests of the community, and that all of the generally accepted accounting principles and the GASB proclamations and the like are being followed. And so all of our fiscal affairs are revolved around that. In addition, the finance department oversees information technology. And as our finance department has matured over time, we've taken on what? A lot of technology. The police department, a lot of technology, everywhere upon the dais, a lot of technology now. And that's part and parcel to the functions of the finance department here at the city. Key considerations are that reductions in finance and technology expenditures will have a direct impact on the volume and number of types of things that the department is able to undertake and manage. And that decisions made on potential expenditure cuts need to be made in a way that still allows the department to achieve those mandated functions, those required functions of financial management and improving up appropriate financial management. So their budget as to general fund is one point eight million dollars. We're looking at information technology and then finance, one point eight million dollars. Ten percent cuts would be about a hundred and eighty thousand. And so we have two vacant positions in the finance department, a financial analyst and an accounting assistant. And that totals to about a hundred and seventy-two, about, you know, eight thousand seven, seventy-two hundred bucks shy roughly of the, of the ten percent cut. But to get to the ten percent cut, because their M and O has been cut over time and there isn't the ability to, you know, further reduce in an order of magnitude that would achieve that, we're really left with the option of not filling two vacant positions. So the impact is gonna be a bit of reduced level of service to the community. It may mean some reduced service counter hours so that staff can, in the, in the, in the period of time that we may not be providing service to people who walk in the door, they can be off doing other functions that are required of the finance department. Projects and tasks may be deferred or eliminated. Some things that we would like to do, we may not be able to do. We may have, in prioritizing tasks, it may mean only financial, annual financial reports as opposed to quarterly or semi-annual and annual. Somehow, taking in that volume of work that the finance department does, prioritizing it into the must-dos versus the additional things that happen that are helpful to all of us, but that require additional personnel that just simply aren't there. So then we move to the city offices. And this is really a bit of a bifurcation of administration and city offices, but we kept all of the elected folks together, although it does appear differently, a little bit differently in your, in your budget document. But we have the city council, you're the policy board. You, you, you set forth the policy, you tell me what the policy is, and I worked with the staff to execute that policy and to get done what you want to have done. The city clerk, that is, we have an elected city clerk position as well as a clerk administrator, which is an appointed position. But under the government co- which is an appointed position, but under the government code, there are many, excuse me, many provisions that deal with all of these things that are prescribed to happen in a city like Galt, a general law city like Galt. And so the clerk's office undertakes those. And of course, city attorney provides us with legal advice on a myriad of issues, and the city treasurer oversees certain financial matters, including banking and investments for us. And the city clerk and the treasurer positions, those are provided for, and have been historically provided for by way of a vote of the people of the city of Galt. So key considerations are that the core services are created through the municipal code and state law. And so our municipal code in and of itself prescribes a lot of things that you do as a council or that the clerk does or that the treasurer does. There are key services in the municipal code that benefit everyone in the city. The revenue that covers these costs are found in the general fund. They're general services. There isn't a separate type of funding source for these particular services. And so there's the budget, about $753,000 between council clerk, attorney and treasurer. And those are, I think, fairly stable costs over time, but still, it's 3/4 of a million And so as we took a look at 10% cuts, at a $753,000 budget would equate to $75,000 in cost elimination. We couldn't get there without eliminating positions somehow. And so what we did is we offer up some areas where we took 10% of the M and O. So from council, eliminate the discretionary funding for city council members, decrease a portion of community promotion funding. And that totaled $6,000, which I think was 10% of your overall M and O budget for council. Similarly, with clerk, we decreased some publication funding with the recognition that if we go hog wild and pass a bunch of ordinances and they all need to be printed up, that cost savings could evaporate. As well as eliminate some community promotion funding, we redo, you know, we use an outside counsel for our city attorney. It's one of the most, in my career, it's one of the most cost-effective ways to attain comprehensive legal advice. And so the costs we pay there are obviously subject to an agreement that we have with our legal counsel, but again, I don't know if you remember this, Kurt, but I did a city attorney study back for this city back in 1992. And from doing that for the first time in this city as well as then, it's one of those things that, as my cousin from Missouri would say, "It just follows me." It's an issue that follows me. I've done it three other times for three other cities, and every time contractual counsel is a far better value. But, and so as a result of that, we don't have much by way of M and O to cut in the city attorney budget. The city treasurer, the same thing. Sean would forego training and some travel that he does, but it only amounts to, excuse me, keep hitting the wrong button, only amounts to about $15,000 out of a $75,000 bogey. So the impacts of the cuts, clearly, if the council's discretionary fund were to be eliminated, it would have an impact for those organizations that each of the council members may support from time to time, and may indeed eliminate some of the funding that's used to thank volunteers for their work on behalf of the city. We talked a little bit about the community, or what would happen in the city clerk's office. We're largely looking at, again, publication elimination there, and we would just have to be careful and cautious to try to achieve that entire amount. And we talked about the effects for the attorney and treasurer. Non-departmental, and this is one of those kind of almost sleeper areas. It's really nondescript, especially when you use the word "non" as the first word in how you describe it. Non-departmental, meaning that things that have to go somewhere, but they don't neatly rest in any one department as defined, and so we also stack all of our events there. And so for non-departmental, it's largely made up, it's largely made up of all of the insurance that we provide to our, to the city. Liability insurance, workers' compensation insurance, property insurance, vehicle insurance, IT disaster insurance, things like that. So it's largely made up of that, as well as some landscaping that happens in certain areas, and I'll show that to you in a minute, that don't fit within a lighting landscape district or within the parks budget. And then, of course, events. And you can see the list there from the IDC to lighting of the night to winter bird festival. And so key considerations are that we belong in a pooled self-insurance fund. It's the most cost-effective way to insure a city. We pool our funds with about 25 other cities, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. And when something happens, if we have a big claim and it goes beyond our self-insured retention, that is the deductible, think of SIR, self-insured retention is deductible, then they help us pay for the cost of that and likewise. And so self-insured pools are the, almost the uniform way in which cities and counties insure themselves. And unfortunately, there really isn't a way to save money in there because there's no profit motive in a self-insured pool. So you can't, you know, it's all just figured out what you need to have in order to cover potential events that are likely to occur. And so then we're left largely with saving money in utilities or the events funding. So there's the budget. You see that 773 is spread between self-insurance and probably a little bit of that is the landscape. 75,000, a little more than that for events, and about $8,900 for the library, the total budget, I think that says 858. So there's our list of events, and we have about $75,500 worth of money in events. And so it may be a non-core service, but one of the things the council will have to talk amongst itself about in taking a look at this is, especially as we get to the next slide, that if events are reduced, in order to achieve $85,800, a 10% reduction in the non-departmental and events budget, it would require a reduction in community promotion funding of nearly $36,000, reduce special events funding by five, decrease watering and enact other energy conservation measures that would save 19. And then, of course, our new landscape contract, which has reduced the level of service, is contributing a little more than 26,000. But you'll have to wrestle with, you know, the non-core issue of community promotion as you think about how the city of Galt defines itself and the character of the community and Galt as a great American little town and things like that. These are hard choices for the council to wrestle with. That's a list of the properties that are paid for by the general fund, that are loaded into the non-departmental because they don't fit neither parks or a lighting landscape district. Look at the, and I think these are the costs that remain after the reduction, is that right? Yeah. So we've already taken out the reduction for the landscape contract, and that central Galt interchange, I'm almost surprised to see that because in another city, we tried to do some interchanges and some interesting landscaping, and we got in right after Caltrans changed the rules, and they wouldn't let you put water in a, it was during the drought, and they no longer allow landscaping of interchanges like that. Even if you'll pay for it, they won't allow it. But anyway, we have $42,000 trying to figure out how we cut additional money from that beyond what we already have is something we'll have to talk about. So the impact is that the core service buildings in non-departmental, we'd have to go through and try to figure out how we ring out about 12% in savings versus what we have budgeted. The landscaping has already been reduced, and we would have to further diminish levels of service in order to ring out additional savings. Reduction of event costs by 33%, community promotion by 63% would either require across-the-board reductions or elimination of specific events. So then administration, which is city manager, this is moving from, you know, we were talking about elected officials before primarily, but looking at administration being the city manager, HR and economic development. Clearly, city manager responsible for all the departments and all the employees in the city, executing the council's policy, steering economic development activities and the like. HR responsible for all the obvious recruitment, retention, benefits administration, classification, compensation, labor, workers' compensation, the list is up there. The HR director also serves as a risk manager, and that's not a nickel-dime thing. That's a serious, a serious role and duty, ensuring that all of the contracts have proper transfer of risk language, that we are in keeping with the requirements of our memorandums, a memoranda of coverage from our self-insured pool and things like that, as well as HR serves and chairs heads-up employee safety. And then economic development, of course, we have, Amy Mendez is our part-time economic development manager, but it's a good position. It serves as a great interface and someone sometimes that can shake the cages of city halls, so to speak, to break things loose on a development project and get something moving in a quicker way for developers. And so then, key considerations to remember as all the positions that the HR director also fills, and they're in that first bullet, some of our expenditures in human resources are reimbursed from other agencies. And then our economic development, we make as much use out of a part-time position as we can in trying to encourage commercial and industrial growth in our community. But the budget is about a million dollars for city manager, economic development and human resources. And so as we looked at cuts to try to equal $105,000, 10% cuts would equal actually 106, really, rounded. In economic development, we reduced travel, training, supplies and professional services by about $6,000 in HR. We reduced a number of things that you see listed there, most of it, training, travel, recruitment and advertising supplies, figuring that with some of the vacancies we have, we would be conducting fewer recruitments and the like, suspending some programs that are to the benefit of our employees and that encourage development, skill development in our employees or encourage certifications of our employees, but recognizing that we're in this pinch, nonetheless reducing those. In the city manager, reducing training, travel, professional services and other M and O items to the tune of $30,000. Reducing the city manager's contingency budget by $21,000. And all of that adds up to about $96,500. Again, about $9,000 short of a 10% mark. And so if we do those things, there may be some limited ability for economic development to be involved the way it has been. I think that Amy, as the person she is and the ability to interface one-on-one with people, that that would not suffer, but anything we bring to bear to try to promote the city in a way, a printed material, collateral material, things like that, would likely suffer under the M and O cuts out of that particular budget. There would also be the employee impacts that I highlighted because of some of the cuts to the programs in the HR. The city manager's contingency budget being reduced, that's okay, but it may hinder the ability of the city manager to respond in a way to an issue of community concern or an issue that the council brings up that might require expenditure of those contingency funds. So in other words, the contingency funds wouldn't be there. It limits perhaps in some way our ability to respond to certain issues or conditions that arise throughout a fiscal year. And then reduce training and participation of the city manager in the International City Manager Association conferences and best practice training. In a perfect world, your city manager would be involved in that because ICMA is literally a premier organization that provides a lot of insight, not only to a city manager, but to staff members who can gain access to the materials and the libraries of material on the ICMA website if you participate. 20% cuts, your window to the future would be about $2.8 million, and we cannot get there, we cannot get there without laying off employees. There would not be a single department that could get to 20% cuts without the elimination of positions within that department. And as you, because we, up to this point, were eliminating the last vestiges of things that are available in any department from an M and O standpoint, we have frozen all the vacant positions that we can freeze in the general fund, that exist in the general fund, and so now you're in a position where you're facing layoff. And having been there, my advice is to avoid that at all costs, but not at the cost of further degradation of the city's financial condition. Avail yourself to every other opportunity to reduce costs before you do that because we are a service organization, and when you begin to eliminate active positions, you truly begin to impact in a very significant way service to the public. But in some instances, it's the only way to ensure that a city doesn't eventually face bankruptcy. So you can read the list of effects, less training and incentives, reduced officers on patrol, you know, all the way down. It's in your printed PowerPoint. One of the things that occurs is overtime, even though you lay off employees, overtime tends to go up. You have to account for increased overtime just because things have to be done, especially in the safety services or in public works and things like that. You still have the after-hour call-out to fix the pump so that things don't happen. Okay. So our next steps, we've been through this, and in a minute, I'll open it up to all your questions, and we can dive into any area of this from a general fund perspective that you want to, but the next steps are that on July 31st, as I highlighted at the beginning, we'll meet about Parks and Rec and lighting and landscape districts, their revenues and expenditures. The general fund makes up the difference in Parks and Rec and lighting landscape, as we've talked about, and so it's going to be very important that we take a deep dive into Parks and Rec and come to a reconciliation, that you, the five of you, talk about it and come to a reconciliation. about the level of Parks and Recreation programming that we'll provide in this community and, uh, at what cost. On August thirteenth, we'll, uh, talk about, uh, options. I will present to you my options, my, my recommendations for the options that I believe that, that, that you should enact and that in my view, uh, working with, uh, the department heads that, uh, would have the, uh, most beneficial effect on reducing cost at the lowest possible service implication to the community. But please don't misunderstand that statement. There would be service reductions to, to our community. Uh, and then we would come back to you, um, with an, an action item at, at one of your regular council meetings. Long-term financial sustainability has to remain the city's goal. Operating with a balanced budget must become our long-term commitment. Yours as a council, yours as the elected leadership of this community, ours as a staff. It must become our commitment to, uh, the community. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I was just curious. Based on the twenty percent cuts, we're looking, uh, for ten percent, we're looking at about one point three-nine, one-point-four million for the ten percent. How close, I didn't add up all these numbers, but how close did you come?
One million, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars.
Okay, so it was pretty good. Couple hundred thousand off.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You had mentioned dipping into the emergency fund. How often do we actually do that?
Well, you haven't yet. And so the, the, the emergency fund is a, a percentage of the general fund expenditures, right? The-
Are you talking about the reserve?
Well, Tom said emergency fund.
Yeah, she's talking about the four-point-four million. And so that, that operates as a percentage of expenditures. And so that, 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 that'll grow, it grows a little bit as our expenditures go up. Uh, but that's carved off right now. And what you're spending through, let me, let me go back to that slide real quick. So this is the emergency fund, this, this reserve per policy. So you have a, uh, policy that says we're going to reserve this amount. We will not touch it except under certain circumstances and with, you know, uh, the, the council would approve that. So that four-point-four gets carved off, it's, it's, it's financed, doesn't let anybody touch it. This number here is your available fund balance in excess of that four-point-four million dollars. Okay?
Okay.
And so when we talk about available fund balance, that's over and above money that's available in the general fund over and above your reserve, which has been carved off and parked to the side. The problem we have is that we are spending it down over a two-year period to this amount, seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. And that's simply not an acceptable, uh, by any stretch, by any definition, is not acceptable. And, um, so we have to, we have to bring our, uh, expenses in line, because that seven-seven-seven is going to carry up to a new line here in FY twenty-one. And you're going to have, without doing anything, you're going to have expenses like this. Well, what's going to happen? You're going to go another one-point-six, one-point-seven in the hole. Well, the seven-seventy-seven will cover part of that, but now you're going to have to spend probably around a million dollars of that number. So now all of a sudden, your emergency reserve drops to three-point-four or three. And you might be able to get away with that for another year, but certainly by the time you hit twenty-twenty-four, all of that's gone or, or, well, actually, all of this, this is what we started the new year with. All of that's gone and all of that's gone. And when you look back at how well the party went, you know that you spent through ten million dollars in four or five years.
So this is a question meeting, right? Okay. So since you brought it up, I wasn't, um, I didn't have a question on that, but now I do. So the, the four, the four-point-four million dollars that's carved off before, so then, just to understand, so I'm going to understand this clearly. So we carve off the reserve and we're left with the four-point, I can't really read it from here, but, so we're overspending above that, that four million, four, is it four-eight? What is it? I can't-
Yes, four-point-eight.
Okay.
Or four-point-eight-five-three.
Spending above that four-point-eight by, by one-point-four million dollars right now. We're overspending, is that right?
And, and so remember, uh, one thing I should point out, this was last year. And so we, um, we, we started last year with the ten-point-five. We had these deducts. All of these are a deduct. The thing about this deduction, the four-point-three, that's where we took that money and parked it off to the side.
Right.
Reserve.
What I'm saying is though is, that's carved off before then we get to an available balance and our available balance is what we're supposed to be living within. And we're not, we're going over that by one-point-four, just-
No.
No.
I, I get where you're going, but, so your available balance, your available fund balance, you really don't ever want that to necessarily go down unless it's for a one-time expenditure. Hey, we had to fix the roof.
Right, okay. We, well, what I'm getting at is, and back to what we talked about earlier this year, is so last year, and I felt it was done under the, under the, under the understanding that the city was in a better financial situation than they were. You know, a previous city manager upped, we upped our reserve policy from twenty to twenty-five, right? Okay. So once we get our budget in order and we're living within our means, if one of our options was to go back to the twenty percent policy, we, that would be five percent less we're carving off of our budget. So basically, we wouldn't need to, that would be a little bit of revenue we wouldn't have to make, because we're taking that off and putting it in the, in, in the ready day fund. Right? Just trying to understand this correctly.
It has to be reoccurring.
No.
Yeah, it would have to be reoccurring money and, go ahead.
No, because it, it doesn't impact your revenue. It impacts your ability to do one-time items. So you're, you, when you're trying to create that stability, you're, you're wanting your revenue to be greater than or equal to your expenditures for the year. So it doesn't actually impact that revenue.
It just always stays maintained at four-point-whatever.
Right.
Not every year taking off four-
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, I had a lot of questions, but I'm just trying to get to the important ones. So one thing, early on when you mentioned, you talked about the deficit in the Parks and Recreation and the deficit of the lighting landscape. What I'm trying to understand though is, I mean, they both cost the general fund money, were both contributing money out of the general fund to those. But the lighting and landscape, in theory, is, was, should have been designed or whatever, it should pay for itself. That's, that's the idea that it should, right? But Parks and Recreation really is not a designed thing that ever, ever really is supposed to pay for itself. Ideally, we would love it to, but if we didn't have a market, for example, we would always, if we didn't have a market and we had a Parks and Recreation Department, there's going to be an expense there. No Parks and Recreation Department that I know of ever pays for itself. So to call it a deficit is not really a fair word to use.
I'm, I'm not sure that I would, I, I, I see where you're going. And so could it be defined that way? Yeah. Do I think that that's a fair description, uh, given this city's history? No. And, and so let me try to parse it just a little bit. It'd be one thing if we didn't have the market. So let's walk down the trail of not having the market at all. What would this city have designed for itself from a Parks and Recreation standpoint?
Where you're going, I know you're going with this, yeah.
Yeah. It would have been a lot smaller, right? And there probably would have been a lot fewer-
We designed, we designed things with the idea of we had two-point-five million coming in and that, now that's one-point-four, yeah.
Yeah.
I get it, so I'm just-
So, so while you're right that in any other city I've been with, you, um, you, your general fund is making a pretty big contribution, because user fees never pay for themselves. There has been a move in the last ten years especially, to get user fees, um, to a point where if, if they aren't paying for them, themselves, they're almost paying for themselves or paying for the, the individualized program, separating out, say, parks admin costs and, and things like that. So you want to make sure you're covering the cost of the T-shirt, the cost for the referee, the cost for the, uh, equipment and maybe the cost for the hat and, 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 and things like that. The cost for the part-time employee now at fifteen dollars an hour versus twelve or what it used to be. Uh, you, you want to be paying those. And so you see a lot of cities have migrated to a point where they're establishing user fees to at least cover those costs. And then administrative costs, the fully, what we would otherwise refer to perhaps as the fully burdened cost of providing that program, they, uh, it, it's covered by, uh, perhaps a contribution from, from the general fund. But I think that Parks and Recreation in this community would look a lot different if the market had never been here. And so another way that we'll talk about, thinking about Parks and Recreation is your cost per capita. And the cost per capita, uh, if I'm recalling correctly, is about a hundred-and-thirteen dollars per capita. It's what we spend for every man, woman and child in Galt. We spend a hundred-and-thirteen dollars on Parks and Recreation.
Per person in Galt, even if they don't use it?
Even if they don't use it.
Okay.
But a majority of that, I think if I remember the breakdown, the problem is it's not so much going to the recreation programs, but it's going to maintain our parks.
Parks and Recreation, right. And so we have a lot of parks and we have a lot of, uh, expense.
So my next question is still on Parks and Recreation. So the recent, uh, decision that we made about the landscaping contract was, which was the savings of like a hundred-and-forty thousand, so that, so does that come, so, so you mentioned that, uh, in last year or the year before, uh, the general fund, uh, contributed a hundred or one-point-four million and then last year it was one-point-two million to subsidize, I don't like using the word subsidize, but to, into that. So what, so is, is that a hundred-and-forty that we just chopped off to savings in that maintenance contract? Is that now going to chip away at that one-point-two million?
Well, so what we will do is, is factor in the savings from, uh, that, uh, from, from, from that, that hundred-and-forty-two thousand will get factored in to the savings that we want to achieve in Parks and Rec. Now, Parks and Rec was asked not to come up with thirty-four percent cuts, but to come up with ten and twenty percent cuts.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm just trying to establish is that, the decision we made obviously was a chip.
Yes.
At least at that, in that area.
And, and we factored it into some of what you saw the general fund paying for-
Yeah, because you split it up? Is that why I only saw twenty-six thousand?
Right, it was split up amongst different, yeah.
Um, so, um, I had a question, I know you don't have, probably have this, I just, maybe you do, but, and I know you mentioned about, you know, the homes, the twenty-five-hundred-and-five homes and the seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven in the process. Let's just talk about twenty-five-hundred-and-five. I mean, I know, we don't know, it could be ten years, I mean, Eastview's been approved for a while. But do we have a rough number of, of what an increased sales tax number or property tax number would look like? If, once all those homes come online that have been completely green-lighted at this point?
Right. We do, um, we can, I don't recall the number, but we've done some research on all of the revenue, um, aspects to bring back to you at the third meeting. Um, I, I don't recall the number, but yes.
I mean, I know it's not going to help us right now, but I'm just thinking long-term, like what, you know, you know, what, what could be very helpful down the road when that comes online? I mean, I would like to think that Eastview could be online in six to seven years from now. I mean, you think unless the economy tanks, I mean, I'd be shocked if it didn't. I don't know.
I thought it would have been a year ago or two years ago.
Well, just to give you an idea of, like, when we do our budget, we have, planning tries to project a number of single, uh, home units we're going to have, uh, built that year. For this next fiscal year, we only have only sixty-six units projected. And that's split between both Elliot projects, his veranda, that small lot subdivision north of Community Park, and then the existing River Oaks development.
We're clearly seeing, but we're clearly seeing a lot of interest in building, because we're getting a lot of subdivision stuff passing through us just in the first six months we've been here.
Oh, absolutely. Well, Tom mentioned it, where we have, you know, all these units in approved tentative maps, seven-hundred units in application, but we're struggling getting them to the finish line and final map ready to build. And that's the struggle, even, you're, you're talking about Eastview, we're struggling getting them, their financing plan to just start their infrastructure. So they're a minimum of two years out before they even can start pounding a nail in a home.
Follow up on a que, on your question?
Yeah, go ahead.
On, on the revenue, the projected revenue for these units, you also have the projected costs, because there's a service cost associated with each new resident. So do we have that, is, is, does that accompany the revenue side?
We can bring that forward, absolutely.
Because I think it, it would show, it really shows, I think, a clear picture of what does this new development mean? Is there a cost to it or is there, you know, excess revenue?
And, and, and typically, it may not be the case in every style of development, but typically resident, residential, as we know, does not pay for itself.
Exactly.
So, but one of the things we're trying to address with that, and we know the issue's really in maintenance. So, you know, we are, uh, looking at creating a new development, community facilities district to help narrow that gap and really doing as best we can where they do pay for itself. But there are other things that are hard to factor in, like how many code enforcement officers do you need as the city grows? Police officers as the city grows?
Now, you have to estimate.
Yeah. So, um, moving on, um, you mentioned in the public works section about the reallocation of certain staff time. In layman's terms, you were referring to, you, you mentioned, uh, taking staff and, and their, most of their time was, was working on certain things, so you would, so what are you saying? Are you saying that you would, you would try to shift their, their pay out of a different fund instead of the general fund? Because is that-
In, in, in essence, yes. And, but, but it's based on a thoughtful process, not just a, hmm, what, what do we need? It's, it's, um, it, it's based on, uh, a detailed assessment of what they're working on. In, in public works, it's all manner of things. You have an engineer, you may work on a general fund project today, a water fund project for the next three weeks, you know, and, and so on. And so, but, but we do have some allocations that, that, that were initially made when the new, um, or I think subsequent to the new cost allocation plan being developed. And in looking at that, uh, we believe that it's high as to the general fund. And so, um, the, the, the slide you saw there, um, was the Public Works Department saying that that's, it's really the second full bullet, uh, evaluate and reallocate staff time. In taking a look at that and doing the analysis for where people are placing their time, we believe we can, uh, adjust that such that we achieve about a hundred-and-three-thousand-dollar savings to the general fund. So it's important to recognize that the general fund is oftentimes a place where positions reside and they may get paid from. And then you go through a process of reimbursing the general fund for having rendered services to these other funds, whether it's the water fund. So, uh, it, it could be the payroll, for instance. General fund position processes all of the water employee payroll, all of the sewer employee payroll. When we go back and we capture the value of those services, because otherwise the sewer fund would have to have its own payroll person and the water fund would have to have its own payroll person. And that's inefficient, you, you wouldn't organize that way. And so what you're, what you're doing is not denying Grandma Jones down on the corner, um, senior services, because you failed to recapture general fund money that, uh, was spent providing services to the water fund.
My next two questions are regarding, um, and if anybody has more ques, I can skip and come back with more questions. I'm just trying to go through-
I have questions.
Okay, you want me to take a break a minute and you can go and I can-
Please.
All right, well, he said to ask questions, so one thing I'm not going to do is not ask questions. I mean, I'm just warning you guys.
I endorse questions.
All right.
I want lots of them.
So you want me to wait, want me to go ahead?
I just, I just have a, a couple more, I think more high-level questions in terms of, um, thank you for the presentation, by the way. Uh, it looks like you, uh, and staff have put a lot of time into this and, and I want to thank, uh, you, Mr. Haglund, for taking the time with me ahead of time, uh, to kind of, as we've been meeting over, over the last several, couple of months, I guess, um, kind of getting in my, my bearings around what, what we don't have in terms of money. So, um, but, so my, my question is this, what, today we've been talking about unrestricted funds, right? I mean, money that comes into the city that have no restrictions, like the L and L district funds do and, um, water and all of that. And so I, my question, I guess, was when you were talking just a minute ago about maximizing, I don't know if you used that word, but maximizing, uh, the cost allocation, and I know that's been kind of a sensitive subject around here before, and, but, but, but that's what we're talking about is the, the recovery of general fund dollars from these, these other funds that are restricted. I, I think, I mean, for me, I think that we need to do it every time where we can, where it's legal to do it, so that we do preserve the right to spend the general fund money the way that was intended to be spent. However, I want to just caution us as a group that some of those funds are underfunded as well. And so there's going to be kind of a trade-off at some point to say, yeah, we could take additional money from the lighting, and I keep going back to lighting and landscape because that's kind of by my experience, but we could take more from the lighting and landscape districts, but as we know, they're, they're woefully underfunded and certainly will be by 2024 if we don't do some of those long-term things that we need to do. So I guess my question is, and, and we talked about this the other day, the cost allocation plan, how does that play into this? And where are we at with that in, in moving forward? How, what, what decisions are we going to need to make regarding that?
So let me start by, by way of just a little background to, to frame your question in, in a broader sense. The city initially formed a cost allocation plan, and interestingly, again, I was here when that process started back in the very early 90s, and implemented it in 1993. And that was operated by a, by a consultant, Maximus Consulting, who does this for many, many cities across the fruited plain, really, California, you know, all across the United States. And they developed a model for going through this cost allocation so that, because cities realized they were denying their community services out of general dollars, general fund dollars, when they didn't recapture the, the dollars that the general fund spent in support of the water fund or the sewer fund like we've been talking. And so the city operated that with Maximus between 1993 and about 2017. And over those many years, Maximus refined the model, but it was a model where the city would gather information, send it to Maximus, Maximus would put it into the model, and send about 150 pages worth of analysis back to the city with some schedules. In those schedules, it would say, here is the allocation from Fund Six, here's the allocation from Fund Forty-Eight, from Fund Forty-Seven, from, you know, and it would go right down the list. Here's the services, basically, that the, the, the general fund provided these other funds. Here's what these other funds should pay back to the general fund. And that operated in a fairly specific and, I would say, detailed way between 93 and 97, and, and in, or 93 and 2017, excuse me, so a, a long period. But all the way, all this information is being sent to a consultant that did this for cities, many, many cities, and in a model that was continuously updated. But it was, it was labor intensive, it, it took some time on the part of staff here and to develop that, that information, and it was something that, that the finance director, as I understand, would work with both department heads and the city manager on coming up with the, the final allocations, making sure that a project that might not have otherwise made it in to the data that was sent to Maximus made it in, in terms of there, there would be a back and forth, oh, we forgot about this project that had an implication, and, it would finally settle out. In 2017, the city commissioned Will Dan to come in and take a look at reestablishing a cost allocation plan. And the, as I compare just side by side, and I really need experts to, to guide me more in, in what I would ultimately say about the, the cost allocation plan. But when I compare Maximus to Will Dan, Maximus was much more detailed in the, the information it gathered. The Will Dan plan is probably much more friendly to use and easier, and, but one of the things we've discovered is that there are, were a number of areas in direct allocations that weren't being recaptured. So what we're doing is we're doing a comparative analysis of the last Maximus plan that was operated and the Will Dan plan that's been operated, to see where the differences are. And then where we establish what those differences are, we're going to drill down to why do those differences exist? Do the differences exist because we should no longer collect that? Or do the differences exist because the Will Dan plan isn't being detailed enough? Or we haven't implemented the new Will Dan plan in a way that captures enough? And so that's what we're in the process of doing. We want to have that back to you by the time you make an ultimate decision. Because the implication is, what if the Will Dan plan should be recapturing to the general fund an additional $100,000, or what if it were $300,000? Well, now you might not need to cut 1.3 million, you might only need to cut a million. And, and it really works this way. If, if, if I'm hungry one day and I don't have cash, and I ask Bonnie Rodriguez to go buy me a sandwich at Mr. Pickles, and she does, with the express understanding that I'm going to pay her back, she, she goes and she does that, she gets my sandwich, I eat my sandwich, I'm full for that day, but Bonnie is going to expect her 750, right? It's just the same principle. The cost allocation plan is as simple as that. There's some detail work and some complexity in gathering all the data, but it's as simple as that.
I, go ahead.
No.
So I, I just think that's, that's an important piece to this before, you know, we as a, as a body begin to make final decisions. And I appreciate the time and energy that staff put in to identify the, the 10% and 20% cuts. But, you know, I think that it's important that, moving forward, we understand that these are our real services to our community. I mean, I, as you went through the presentation, there wasn't a piece there that didn't affect our community. And so, so I think it's going to be important that, that moving forward, we look at things, you know, beyond this year in the, the initial cuts that we have to make, or that we're, we're going to be requested to make. But in those mid and, and long-range issues or, I guess, results that we could come up with, that we really look at outside-of-the-box types of methodologies of increasing revenue, reducing expenses, or a combination of both, or any, anything like that. And I go back to, and I've been beating this drum since about a year ago, that we really need to look into intergovernment agreements and, and buying power of, of our city if we have an agreement with other organizations, like the perfect one is CACOG, or, you know, how we're a part of that, and we have buying power because of CACOG, when we need things that they can bring to the table. But we shouldn't limit that to just the, the formal groups that are out there already, but really explore that beyond, beyond that with other agencies. And again, you know, public-private partnerships. I know we're not talking about Parks and Rec tonight, the budget, not that budget tonight, but when we were talking about it a few weeks ago, the question came up about why isn't there a nonprofit organization, just as some other many cities have and we have, even in our own city, you know, running, you know, helping with the girl softball program here. We have the boys league, and so I think there are those opportunities out there with our, our community partners and our stakeholders to really capture, recapture some of this, of this loss of revenue or loss of service, but do it in a, in a smart, deliberate way. And I think the other piece I just want to mention, and I'll, I'll be done for a while as well, Sean, so, is, is we really need to, and I'm sure this has been done, but really need to drill down with our, our folks that are working out in the field. You know, what efficiencies do they see out there? You know, we have a, a stable of employees that are constantly out there doing the work every day, touching our community every day, and what is, what do they see as efficiencies that could, that could, you know, contribute to some reduction in, in cost? So, so I'll stop there, but I just wanted to kind of get that out there to help at least give people an idea of where, kind of where my mind is.
Question, could you go back to the general fund summary? Please. That's on page 10. That, in looking at this, and if I understand this correctly, Tom, basically from 1819 to 1920, we're looking at about a 2.4 million dollar loss.
Yep.
And then from, then in the following year, we're looking, well, why would we have less of a loss from the 2.4 to the 777?
So one of the things is if you look at the Parks and Recreation contribution, it drops from 1.4 to 1.2.
Okay, okay.
So it's right off the bat, that's going to be, going to be one of, one of the things. And so then if you look at, go up a little bit, and you look at personnel, operations, maintenance, and minor capital, it falls from 14.6 to 13.7.
Okay, okay. And, and what are the reasons for that? Were those cuts?
Yeah.
They are cuts?
Yeah, they're current vacancies that are, that are frozen, other, other cuts that have occurred.
Okay. What I'm trying to get a handle on is, okay, based on the 1819 budget, we're looking at making up about 2.4 million in order to maintain that budget.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's, am I interpreting that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so we know that the 10% is not going to come close, about half.
Of the 2.4 loss?
Yeah.
You're absolutely right.
So that's why, that's why you were targeting the 20 as, I guess, as a number to...
Right, so the 20 provides us about 2.7.
Seven, yeah.
It's 2.8 million.
Okay.
But what comes with that is very dramatic cuts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I understand.
And, and so what I'm trying to do here, i- if, if we just concentrate on fiscal year 20, the far-right column, I'm trying to make sure that the, the best of all worlds for me, as I stand here tonight, is to be able to help the city have an available fund balance at the, on July 1st of 2.429509, 2.4 million, both on July 1st and June 30.
Okay.
That you have a balanced budget, that your expenses equal your income.
Okay.
And we can achieve that without 20% cuts.
Okay.
But you do need to see a window to the future. I wasn't sure what 10% cuts would produce, you know? I mean, in theory, well, it should produce 10%, yeah, I mean, I get that, but I wasn't sure what we would actually be able to come up with. And you see in the slides that some of the departments kind of struggled to come up with that actual 10%. But in, you know, it's always instructive to know what's around the corner if you can try.
Sure.
And, and, and so 20% cuts are your viewpoint, view around the corner. You got that around-the-corner mirror. You can see it, it's there, it's, it's waiting for you.
Okay.
I have a question about the report on page 45, the events for 201920. It's still got the Heritage Festival listed on there, and I know Galt High didn't do the best 5K. This was 1920, so...
This is for 1920, and so were those, would those have been held in the last few days?
We haven't done Heritage in two years.
Okay, well then...
Yeah, that event, I think, won't recur.
It was approved in last year's sponsorship.
Okay.
They did not request for this year.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's, but it's in the budget, so that may be an easy one to eliminate.
Probably is, and, okay, and one more budget question. So this is budget, it's not actually expenses, so...
Right.
When you reconcile at the end, that's where I like to see what's left over, but...
Right.
So take city council, for example, we've got some expenses with insurance and things like that. There's a big $40,000 expense for council insurance. I don't take council insurance, so if you divide that by five, that's $8,000 we save. Where does, can that be budgeted in? I don't, does there anybody else not take? Well, it's private information, but I don't take insurance, so.
So let me mention the methodology here. So the city, as, every individual has a participation, potential participation in the health benefits or any other. And those are then pooled and then distributed out based on how many positions are in a particular area. So if, if, if council has less people opting into benefits, it doesn't really reflect in your budget because it's a smoothed figure, okay? So it's not the cost of your benefits, it's generally speaking, the cost of, A, council members' benefits, if that makes sense.
But it's budgeted, so if we're not using that budget of money, where does it go?
It, it's not included in the total, right? So the total that's determined to be split out amongst all of the positions becomes less for everybody else because of you opting out or somebody else opting out.
Yeah, think of it as like, if you had your own insurance, you could pay your own, say you had your own private health insurance that you pay for, you say, well, if I just forego health insurance for a year, I'll save that money. It's not the same when it's pooled, like in a greater group like that.
Yeah, it, it makes a difference to the city as a whole if, if several people opted out. It would make a difference as a whole, but it would be smoothed across all departments.
So, so the fact that you don't take the insurance is calculated into what, what is in the council's budget?
So the insurance means all the employees or just only council?
It's on page...
It, it's all the employees, yeah.
Well, there's council insurance listed on page 50 of the budget, but...
Right, so, so there's a pooled number that's developed based on everybody that takes the insurance, and then it gets apportioned out to all the various budgets.
Just trying to help us with our 10%.
So I have a couple more questions, and then I'll open it up to somebody else again. Try to do a couple of questions at a time, like that. All right, so one of my first was, was right in line with what Rich was saying. I was going to ask you about the cost allocation. You and I had had a couple of meetings where you had felt that the cost allocation plan that we were using currently could have been, I don't know what the exact words you used, but it could have been a contributing factor to the deficit we're in now, like, because it wasn't implemented fully, or it wasn't, it wasn't right for Galt possibly, and you were digging into that. So, so you're going to basically be coming back to, and I agree with Rich, I'd like to see that sooner than later, because it would be good to know if, if that's, if that is a contributing factor, and, and if that's going to help kind of change the course a little bit, too.
Yeah, I, I would like to see it sooner than later, too, and it's, it's a priority. But as you can imagine, in getting even ready for tonight, there are volumes of, of information that we're wading through, but that is, it's always been a concern. I, I don't know whether it will produce a savings, you know, to the general, I, I don't know the ultimate answer to that, but I am concerned enough that it may, that I think this comparative analysis that we're doing, and then going through and following any differences to the end of the trail is important for us to do.
Well, yeah, I, I like the fact that you're just no stone unturned. I mean, I'd hate for, you know, Mike to, to, you know, give up something in his department that he really feels, but, but, you know, make a sacrifice, and we find out there was, you know, some program we're using, or allocation program that plan that we're using that was not appropriate. So my next one was regarding PD, actually. So it was mentioned that freezing those two positions, the two positions that are open. So my question with that is, I know there's a lot of overtime in PD now, so free, so freezing positions and not hiring filling positions, you said that one of the drawbacks to that was creating more overtime. Is that not going to, I mean, I get that you don't have, with the full-time position comes benefits and all that kinds of, so I get that. So, so sometimes it, it can actually be better just to have an existing person working a little more overtime. But at one point, is it going to be kind of not really cost-effective because we're going to have so much overtime, and then it's, then overtime is, of course, fatigue on officers because they're working too many hours, and then, you know, that kind of, then it breaks, then it's a morale problem, and it gets to be that way. So I just don't, I don't know if, you know, saying we're going to get by with less officers, but we're going to create more overtime, is that, what's the, what's the, what's the, the net gain there with that?
So that'll be one of the things that will more particularly factor in, but having done, been in the unfortunate... But having done, been in the unfortunate position of having done this before, where the elimination, officer for officer, given the size, you know, if you, if you equalize the size and all that, where in, in my other experiences, unfortunate as they were, where the elimination was greater than this, it, it, it wasn't a situation that created a overtime disparity where you would say it negates keeping that, or freezing that position. I think that we're fine here. I think that there, there, we'll, we'll take a close look at what potential overtime may, may exist. Sometimes the overtime is, ends up being because of other factors. I mean, clearly, for these, these positions, one, number one, are vacant today. So, we're, we are covering the streets and every hour of the day with, with these vacancies in existence today. And they've been vacant for, for at least a little while. But sometimes the overtime is as a result of those unintended events or situations, where you're, you're responding to something that's converging at the time. And yes, if you had those positions, maybe you wouldn't have to call in that, that one or two other officers, that, that, that these would be out there. But I, I, I think on balance, what, what, what the chief has done is, is tried to, to look at his department and the vacancies that we have today, what are the modifications that we can make relative to the duties that are assigned to minimize service interruption and, and, and overtime? And Chief, do you have anything you want to add to that?
So, so with that being on the same note there, if, I, I mean, I don't think anybody would disagree that if there's certain positions, even with like, there was the two finance positions, I think, I saw it. Some other stuff that's not filled, that's vacant, if we're kind of making do without those, those would be easy cuts. If those are factored in our budget, if we're, those are factored numbers, so if we just freeze those, then we save that money back. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, those are factored in the budget right now.
So, but going back to the positions open, how does that affect our Measure R, though? So now, i- is that going to affect us being compliant with the Measure R, meaning that we now, because, so, so what I'm leading to is to, I know we're at a timeframe, and I don't know if Lieutenant Kalanowski could pipe in on this because he's the Measure R person, I think is knowledgeable here. I think we're at a timeframe now where at any given time, we can actually go back to the, to the, to the people, and we can ask for additional positions to be added into Measure R. There's like a certain timeframe where you can ask. And let's say we wanted to have another, I don't know, dispatcher, for example. So, we go back and we ask the Measure R positions to go to 11 positions instead of 10, for example. I'm, I'm looking for ways to staff the police department under different spending than using it from the general fund. Is there something we could possibly do that? Or we would not be able to because we're freezing positions in the general fund and now being, not compliant with that?
Excellent question. So, one of the things that the council does every time you adopt a budget, you adopt an expenditure plan for Measure R. And the expenditure plan that you adopt for Measure R is page something in the budget. It's Measure R, has the positions, has the, all of the costs associated that are being charged off to Measure R. That is your expenditure plan, you adopt it, and, and that's the, that's what we now use as the expenditure plan. The original, when, when Measure R was out for a vote, and, you know, there was a campaign going on to, for the, the community to support it, there was originally, because there was nothing in the budget, there was no Measure R budget, there was a piece of paper that articulated a certain, how the funding, the anticipated funding would be used initially. And then the, and once all of that occurred, then the council, literally at will, can allocate other things. You can adopt new expenditure plans, and like I said, every time you adopt a budget, you adopt an expenditure plan for Measure R because all of the Measure R money is accounted separately, and it's accounted for in its own division, if you will, of, of your, your budget. So, to your question, in 2008, it was something more than $5 million. Dollars, five, so you see the second bullet, the number at the end? Police expenditures at the time Measure R was adopted was 5.422 million.
So, that's, that's the budget, that's how much it costs for the police department?
That's what we spent on police services.
Okay.
Right. And so then Measure R layered in money on top of that. And as the economy grows, the theory is Measure R sales tax will grow, right? I mean, it's, it's like any other, any other sales tax. A new sales tax dollar comes in, we, we add that additional half percent, you know, to, to the Measure R funding. Presently, Measure R funds 10.5 positions, but the passage of the act didn't limit you to 10.5 positions.
Right, I know, I'm familiar with it, yeah.
So, what Measure R really says is that Measure R is to provide services beyond the 2008 budget of 5.4 million. You can't drop below that. Otherwise, Measure R would be supplanting money in the general fund. Supplant bad, supplement good.
Right, supplement.
So, as long as you don't go, as long as the city doesn't go below $5.4 million, the, that, that number, you can take the general fund allocation to the police department up and down. And it's about, that bottom number, bottom bullet, highlighted number of $1,039,305 is the amount the general fund portion of police services has grown beyond the floor of 2008.
So, then your answer is, yes, that that was something we could be looking at?
Absolutely.
If, if the Measure R fund is, has sufficient, I don't even have a clue what it's at right now, but if it had sufficient funds to, to be able to hire additional positions, of course. So, I was just throwing that out there because I was thinking, well, maybe we could find a way to save money here and get it out of a different place.
And that's part of what you see up there.
Okay.
Great, great idea, and you're exactly right, to the extent Measure R revenue could support it.
Yeah.
And the reorganization of the community service position, is that, that's basically just giving that position some more other duties?
Yes, it's, it's actually two things. So, it's, it's saying that, on the one hand, we have a vacancy in the department, the parking control officer. And the parking control officer is either in whole, or at least in part, paid from funding from another fund, not the general fund. And so if we have the CSO take over those parking control duties, we can reduce the CSO's draw on the general fund by the amount of funding from the parking control officer money, and we affect a $63,700 savings to the general.
This is TJ's position, right?
Yes.
So, we're going to make TJ a meter maid? Is that what we're going to do?
Well, we think of it as a parking control officer, but yeah.
Not a meter maid, it's the vehicle abatement, it's the abandoned vehicles, it's cars on blocks, it's...
I didn't mean, yeah, I was just, I was joking, but...
Motor homes.
Yeah.
But I think that, I think the key here is, excuse me, I'm sorry for jumping in here. I think the key here, though, is, is as I heard this unfold in your presentation, Mr. Haglund, was that some of his duties are going to be removed
That's right.
from what he's currently doing, because you can only do some, you can only do a certain amount of work in 40 hours. So, what we're talking about is, he wouldn't be doing neighborhood watch meetings, community outreach events like he normally does, or that, like he has been doing, and all of that. But he would be taking on those other responsibilities. Keeping him employed in that
Correct.
CSO position.
Correct.
Okay.
I sometimes get confused between the responsibilities of code enforcement, like what Rusty does, and the vehicle abatement such as the chief just mentioned. I sometimes I'll send out an email, and they'll be, well, that's vehicle abatement, that's PD, and, or that's whatever. I, I kind of get confused on whose duty or what, but there's definitely a difference.
Private property, public streets. I mean, so if you just look at it that way, if you just break it down that way, it's the simplest way to break it down.
So, TJ, so...
Code enforcement is private property, and, and we handle the public streets. That's the simplest way to break it down.
I'll wait for my next, I have a couple more, but somebody can go on, somebody has some questions?
No, I have a quick question. I think most of the money we're saving on the vacant position.
I, I'm sorry.
Most of the money we're saving on the vacant position, right? And all these vacant position is for a while, or they're just from each department, like in from the police department, from the, these position is just vacant, or it's vacant for a while?
Well, the, the three in police have been vacant for a little while, haven't they, Chief?
So, we run a functional vacancy of about 11 year round. That, so what that basically means is you fill, you have vacant police officer positions, not from a lack of effort of hiring them, but it just takes so long to find qualified applicants and then get them through the process. So, usually we have about three vacancies anyway in the police department. So, these three vacancies, we've probably had for a matter of six months or so, trying to fill those positions. We don't have any prospective candidates to fill those three specific positions in the near future either.
Thank you.
I, I think Claire had some.
And in finance, one of them is a very recent, it's, it's, some of this is just a factor of the timing of this. When our interim city manager asked us to take a look at what we could do and, and try not to impact an existing employee, it may be a vacancy that just occurred. So, most of them, what I would say is that all of these vacancies have an impact on the service to the community and to the other departments. And they're not positions that have laid frozen for many years and we don't need them, kind of a thing. They're positions that have full job descriptions, that have expectations for the service for the community. We did take a look to see if we had any long-term frozen positions that are budgeted, that we could, that we could impact. We didn't have any. I think those had already been removed.
I do have two, sorry to interrupt, but I have two more comments. Since this slide is up, that last bullet shouldn't be up there. It's not on our list, so we, it was inadvertent, it was, it was up there, but records dispatch position is not on the table, so I wanted to make that clear. And then the second one. Yeah, it's a supervisor position, so that, that, that one is inadvertently on that slide. So, I want to put that on the record. And then the, the second thing is when we were talking about TJ's position, the community service officer. It's, yes, 100% of his time is community outreach, crime prevention. By reallocating his duties and assignments and what he does, that is going to be reduced. And so, and so somebody else in the department will be taking that over. It's probably going to be Lieutenant Small sitting in the back of the room, but just, it's, it's going to be handled, it's going to be handled, it's just going to be handled by somebody else. Or some of the things that we currently do is going to be eliminated altogether.
Yeah, my question wasn't relaying, like, that's how I was thinking of leaning. I was just trying to clarify what that meant, and I was thinking of what that position was. And I, and as you know, I work with TJ on a lot of stuff. I know he does a lot in the community, and it's important. But as you said, too, you know, you were saying those positions are important and going to impact services. Well, I think everything we're looking at is going to impact services in some form or another. I, I think one of the things you mentioned about finance was, I was thinking was, one of the downfalls of the finance thing was them being available less to the public. But, you know, they're only available four days a week to the public as it is. So, it's like, I mean, you know, so I think there's going to be a level of service, like you said. Everything's important, I mean, you know, every, but we've seen the slides. We know everything's important in every department. I think what we're trying to figure out is what's going to be the least impactful? And then ultimately, for me, I think of the community impact versus the impact of the one. And I don't mean, what I'm saying is, I, I, I'm not going to sacrifice things that affects a broad number of people before I look at the, the small impact that it could have on one person. And I don't mean by a job position, I'm just saying that's, that's a factor. My one last question I had, that I have written down here, was the central interchange? Explain to me the $36,000 for interchange, is that just in landscape upkeep, or what, what is that?
Yeah, I think that that, Armando, that, that's the cost of the landscape contract.
That is the number of the landscape contract that was just approved.
And interchange meaning the main of?
Yes.
A Street?
A Street, C Street.
Street, all of, if we go down a certain, certain depth.
So, what do they do for 36,000? I mean, I'm just questioning.
You're talking about the weeds?
They're, they're maintaining the weeds, or...
They don't maintain the weeds. I see it all the time. I always think to myself, we should do that, I think, oh, that's probably not us, this probably counts. But it doesn't look like they do anything. I'm just saying.
Well, they'll do it once a month.
These people will be here, just started on Monday, so that, that's on this new number. We just accepted that recently. It, it hasn't been, it was, it was under the, the, under the warranty still, and the contractor was still doing a lot of the weeds, and maybe that's where you did it.
So, it's 36,000 a year for the, for the two interchanges?
Yeah.
The A Street and the one right here, the two big ones.
That counts the trees all the way down?
Not all the way down to the freeway, there's a certain point, we have a map that we can show you where we stop, and then...
And that comes, is that a general fund? Does that come out of Parks and 07?
The, this is, no, this is coming out of the general fund.
General fund, oh, it's because it's...
All of those that you see listed there are out of the general fund.
Okay.
Is there a reason that the landscaping for the freeway wouldn't come out of transportation?
Good question.
Ooh.
I know Mike doesn't like that.
We'd have to look and see if that's permissible.
I, I would tell you, in dealing with, the city has stocked into my former position at the county and having joint interchanges, it's always been a general fund cost. Because it's, because it's, because it's an amenity. It's, it's not a necessity to the transportation system. It's an amenity.
Heck, yeah.
Yeah, but you guys made the decision.
Actually, city, actually, city policy did for beautification, so, yeah.
Paige just asked me if I wanted to do the weed abatement on the freeway for 36,000. I said, I could probably squeeze that in. The $1,607 for the parking lot, is that the same thing? Is that just weed?
Yep.
Because that's just a little stretch of asphalt.
Yeah, that's the annual cost.
Okay.
Oh, it's not a month, it's per year.
Yeah, I know.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, well, that's all I had for the moment. Anybody else have anything?
I would point out, it's not just landscaping, it's striping and that kind of thing, too, so, as needed, so...
It's what, Mike probably missed that.
Striping and curbs and...
Like the striping the curbs and things like that, yeah.
Is there anything?
So, if I could, one other piece of data that was asked for was that property tax on those buildings. For about, for 100 units, the annual property tax is about $74,000 to the city.
I had one last thing. I would like, at some point, just from my knowledge, what?
Don't hurry, she's going to gavel you out.
It's time for questions, I'm just, would it be possible, at some point during this process, just to get an idea of personnel costs and stuff, to see what the personnel cost of each department is versus how many people are working in that department? And I know it can be skewed because if you have Parks and Recreation, you know, they have a lot of minimum wage people, and that spreads the cost, whereas something like, I don't know, Finance, maybe you have higher qualified people, and they might have nine people in there, whatever, I would just like to see that, though.
Yeah, we have it here for...
But does it show, does it show how many people are in that department versus?
Oh, no, we can put the, yeah, we can put, we can put the number of personnel, it would be on that. So, you see police, personnel, O and M.
Isn't that in, one of the schedules in the budget?
It is.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
Okay, well, if you could point out what Paige, if you could let me know what page that's on the budget, I can look. I don't have my budget binder with me.
It's after 50. All right.
So, if I could, take two minutes to wrap up. Appreciate the council's questions and taking in this presentation. Clearly, we've outlined a lot of things that will hopefully provoke thought on, on your part. But in the end, as we have seen on that general fund summary a number of times now, we, we clearly have to make decisions. And while none of the department heads want these, or, or, you know, clearly aren't fans of, of any of these reductions, the city has to do something. You, you, you have to take action to bring expenditures in line with your, your revenues. And so, the general fund tonight is one component of looking at that. And what we will do on July 31st is take a look at the Parks and Rec budget and... And what we will do on July 31st is take a look at the Parks and Rec budget and lighting landscaping. And then, on August 13th, I'll be bringing back to you some of my recommendations where you can get into the grist of really, you know, trying to decide where you want. But between Parks and Recreation, between general fund, between cost allocation plan, and the like, we have to come up with either savings, or if it's through the cost allocation plan, great, or reductions. Because we're at that phase, that short-term phase. The only thing we can do is either adjust cost allocation plan appropriately, if that's warranted, or make reductions. And then, as we move towards midterm and long-term, we can begin to look at other opportunities to save that take more time in order to achieve. So clearly, long-term would be if, and I have some ideas when we get to that point, but long-term may include revenue measures for, that could simplify, at least in one case, a lot of what we do, both with our lighting landscape districts and our CFDs. And that would apply community-wide. But those sorts of things require an election in November of 2020. But those are the things that should remain on the radar of the city council even past this. So our next meeting, July 31st, Parks and Rec, lighting landscapes.
Well, thank you, Tom. Just to clarify, this isn't stuff you pulled out of your hat. You've been working closely with department heads.
Yeah, this is, everything you saw tonight was all the department heads participating. Michelle Neely, Matt Boring in Finance, clearly Claire. It is a combined effort. And what I would tell you about the department heads is every single department head stepped up to do what they could and in a serious way because they're concerned about the financial sustainability of the community right now of this city. And they want to do right by the community. And so they are all part of this, they're all vested in it, and they're all committed to getting the city on the right financial track.
Thank you, department heads. Meeting adjourned.